Call the meeting to order. We'll start with pledge of allegiance. I invite you to join it.
Pledge of allegiance, issued by the United States of America, and to the Republic, religious stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Gehrig, Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
You've got Tony Gehrig on? Shelley?
Yeah, I'm here, yep.
Good. The announcements for the week. Fargo-Cast Public Health will celebrate National Public Health Week, April 2nd through April 8th. Each day will feature a specific theme, including behavior health, communicable diseases, environmental health, injury and violence prevention, and ensuring the right to health. Other events during the week include community emergency response team training at West Acres on April 3rd, and stepping on, a free seven-week fall prevention workshop for the area residents aged 60 or older begins April 5th. All events are free and open to the public. Contact Fargo Public Health for more information and to register. We thank you, Cast County Public Health, for all you do. Library. Program highlights at the library during the next couple of weeks include: the children's department will present the Wizard of Oz play at the Stage of Island Park on March 27th, with more than 60 area kids involved as a cast and as a crew. A parrot pails event featuring the staff of the Center of Avian Adoption, Rescue, and Education is set for April 2nd at the main library. Kids of all ages can meet Bali the African Grey, Yogi the Blue Macaw, and other parrots. Cast members from NDSU's theater production, Junie B. Jones in Jungle Bell's Batman Smells, will be at the library on April 7th to present a sneak peek of their upcoming production. Library's gonna have to think about these things. April is the National Poetry Month, and the library will be hosting a favorite poem reading event on April 8th at the main library. Anybody interested in sharing or reading their favorite poem is asked to call the library to register. Bruce Scrub is gonna read his famous Tioga poem that he loves so much. The five library staff members attending the Public Library Association Conference in Philadelphia last week. The association is dedicated to supporting the unique and evolving needs of public library professionals. Interesting thing in planning, they always bring these great things to us, so according to the US Census Bureau, the Fargo metro area grew by 3,873 people between 2016 and 2017. That's approximately 10 people per day moved into town. The Fargo metro area had an estimated population of 241,356 as of July 1st, 2017, up from 2016. Population growth from the time between 2010 and 2017 is 32,579. Lot of people, that's the size of West Fargo, isn't it, John?
It'd be one of our biggest towns.
Yeah. Chief Todd. Police, he's gonna give a report tonight as well, but Chief Todd said he is thankful that none of his officers involved in recent shooting incidents were hurt. He said it's a blessing that the police department has learned not to take for granted. He said these are chaotic and stressful situations, and he wanted everybody to know that the police department takes care of its people in the aftermath of the shooting, and does the right things in order to protect the integrity of the investigations. He says those involved have his utmost respect and confidence because they followed their training and did what they had to do. Usually our police officers are not on duty and taking some time off after these shootings, that's been investigated. The support of the public and of the department for these members is very much appreciated. Thanks, Chief. And finally transit. The Metro Bus Igo Ego Challenge started today, great day with the snow out, and thus far has more than 200 registered participants. Sign up in an igoechallenge.com and give up your car once per week, or ride mat bus, walk, bike, roller bade, or carpool to work or school. Enter your eco-friendly transportation mode each week at the igoechallenge.com to be eligible for a prize, and there are some prizes that are to be given out. And then lastly, tomorrow we're gonna have a special guest in our community. It appears that Vice President Pence will be in the community, so if you have a little disruption of your traffic or getting from here to there, just bear that in mind. But we're happy to welcome him to our community. Maybe he could come and look at the diversion product we're doing. So, is there a motion to approve the order of agenda involving item 7 is gonna move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve the minutes, March 12th, 2018, regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Finally, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 26 excluding item 7, which has been moved to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Grinberg Strand, I think is what it was. Shelley? Yep, okay. Roll call, hold, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
So Police Chief Todd is gonna come up and give us a report, he's gonna update us on police involvement. He's given every one of the commissioners a 27th Annual Report, 2017, and that's gonna be on our website. People can get that on the website, right, Chief?
Yes, it should be up now.
And it's got a lot of good pictures and data in there, and they filled it with stories as well. Are you gonna start it off with a rap or anything, 'cause I know they had some rap songs?
No rapping, that's not, that's not one of my gifts.
Okay. But we had a few incidents in the community lately with shootings, and we're concerned about it. Commissioner Grinberg had kinda asked for a report, and what we elected to do is expand it a little bit and go over the annual report with the commissioners and the public, so it'll have a little bit more than the annual report has here tonight, and some explanations of what's happening in the community. Chief Todd?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for having me this evening. I know that you have some questions about some of the ongoing investigations we have, and I think publicly I've shared what I can share up to this point, and some of those incidents, of course, did not happen within our jurisdiction. Actually, out of the four shootings that have happened, only one has happened in our jurisdiction. Two were in Clay County and one in West Fargo. The West Fargo one, we were involved in because we have two members on the SWAT team that were involved in that, and the one in Fargo involves one of our officers at a domestic disturbance and a violation of a protection order. We'll continue to investigate those or assist the BCI. There are parts of the investigation that we take on as a police department, such as the domestic violence investigation, the violation of the protection order, the attempted aggravated assault on an officer, but as far as the officer's use of force, we ask another agency to come in as an independent unbiased agency to investigate that use of force, and that would be the North Dakota BCI. So they are currently conducting that part of the investigation, and usually those investigations take three to four weeks, including a review by the state's attorney's office, to make sure that we're in compliance with North Dakota Sentry Code, and also coinciding with that is an internal investigation that we conduct as a police department to make sure our administrative rules, our policies, our training, were all followed, and to see if there's any deficiencies in our policy or our training that we need to correct. So all of that is ongoing at this time. At the same time, while we're doing all that, we try to find ways to take care of our officers that were involved in these incidents, because they're fairly traumatic incidents, their incidents where life, the officers felt their lives were in danger, or there was a deadly force encounter threat there, and that that's why they had to respond. So, of course, we place them on paid administrative leave while we're looking at this and investigating it, and right away after the incident, we have them go through what we call a packed diffusing. That's a pure assistance crisis team, which takes the officers involved and diffuses them, goes through the incident. Studies say that that's helpful for the officers to go through psychologically. Also, within 24 to 48 hours, we have them meet with a police psychologist and go through a session with them. We then schedule a more intensive packed debriefing, where they participate in a debriefing with other officers that were at the scene and involved. We visit with them and periodically check on them. Before they come back to work after the investigation is complete, we do a psychological fitness for duty before they return to duty, and then we also have them pair up with an officer out in a squad car for their first one or two nights, make sure they're comfortable being out there, and the anxiety is okay and manageable for them. So, those are some of the things that we do behind the scenes with officers that are involved in these, and kinda that caretaking role, because we want them to have a healthy and productive career that's gonna last 25 to 30 years down here, and so that's why we wanna make sure we take care of our officers. Unless you have any questions on that, I'm gonna proceed a little bit with what's going on in Fargo. Yes, Commissioner Strand?
I do, and I want to commend our police department for keeping our community safe and for doing the hard jobs that are out there to be done. And I know you've met with the family of the Dietrich family, and I grew up with these people, and here's the message I get out of this. It's just a travesty in our community when we can't get people the help they need when they need it. This wouldn't have happened if we had our systems and our services providers in place to address these issues contemporaneously when they're unfolding. And this is an eye-opener, I hope it's an eye-opener for all of us. We're not done addressing the issues of addiction, and intervention, and treatment, and education. And I just feel so bad that this is another example where it gets down to the path that far. And I feel bad for our law enforcement, that's what they're facing, I feel bad for the family, that's what they're experiencing, and I can tell you sincerely, and you know this as well, they're absolutely at the end of their rope, what to do, how do we get help, where do we turn? This is an important issue for all of us, and I hope we can, as a community, wrap our arms around that and our head around that and address that, so that, you've said so many times, we can't arrest ourselves through and out of these addiction issues. People need help, and I join you with that. And I have one question on another incident, Chief Todd, just completely separate, and I might be off on this, but there was another standoff in early March, and I happened to know that individual too. And it was a suicide standoff, but then when I found out about this, I'm reaching out and saying, "Well, what kind of help are you getting?" And I said, "Well, who are you working with? Who's counseling you?" And I got the impression that there's another gap there, that if we have something like that happening for hours, and there's a suicide potentially going on, or that you're trying to deflect that from happening, and you did, they did it successfully, but then what, I wonder? Then who do we refer these folks to? And maybe there's more to this system, and maybe I just didn't get this, but, and that's not a law enforcement criteria.
No, but you're right, Commissioner. I agree with your statements beforehand, and I agree with your statement here, that we have some gaps in our systems where people that need mental health assistance and treatment, and sometimes residential treatment, they are not getting that. And if you'll talk to families, like the Dietrich family, who tried many times to get their son, their brother into treatment, to get him committed, and they got very little help in that respect, and unfortunately, we ended up where we ended up.
Thank you.
I'm gonna talk a little bit here in regards to what I think is driving some of the things in our community, and that's included here, so. I have supplied you all a copy of our 2017 Annual Report, and you can go through that at your leisure. It has some of our data in it, our stats, and then highlights some of what I think is great community involvement between the police department and the community that we serve. Our goal is to be not apart from our community, but a part of our community, and so that's something that we really strive for. But in the stats, you'll see an increase in crime, and I wanna explain what I think is driving that increase. So on the PowerPoint here, what you see is a overall breakdown of incidents. We answered about 106, over 106,000, almost 107,000 calls for service last year. About, that equates to about 292 calls for service per day. And 162 of those calls for service per day come through dispatch, where they're calls that we're receiving and then responding to, and going out and trying to solve a problem, or take a report of crime, investigate a crime, and then 130 of those per day are officer-initiated. Things that our officers are out on the street, they're seeing, and they're taking action, and that's without a dispatch having happened. So when you put those two together, you have 106,878 calls for service. If you look at our calls for service that are coming in through dispatch, you see that we're fairly even, relatively even, but if you look at the officer-initiated, you see quite an increase on that. On the right-hand side of the screen, it breaks down a little bit more of the officer-initiated, whether it's community-oriented policing, or field contacts, parking complaints, checking on suspicious people, traffic stops, those are the officer-initiated type of things that are driving our numbers. Now, I'll tell you that because we've had a plan in place to increase our staffing, our personnel, which the commission has been fantastic at supporting us, of five to six officers a year to catch up to where we needed to be, and then to continue to grow with the city, when we first started that, we were pretty reactive, meaning our officers were so busy answering calls for service coming in, they didn't have a lot of time to go out and look for things, too. Now we're catching up, where officers are having a little more time to find things and initiate activity. When we do our stats, we measure them in two different categories. Part 1 crimes is our more serious crimes, anything from homicide, sexual assault, robbery, burglaries, motor vehicle thefts, those type of crimes are more serious ones, and then we have the Part 2 crimes, where I'll call them more quality-of-life type of issues, they're less serious crimes, and those are the ones that are actually driving our increase, and what we'll see in our officer-initiated activity. Here's a breakdown of the offenses, the Part 1 crimes. On the left side of the screen, you'll see our 0% increase, actually a few down from last year, which is good, that's our more serious crime. On the right side of the graph there, you see our Part 2 crimes, that's where we have our increase. And then on the far right, you'll see that broken down is 10. What are the Part 2 crimes that are driving that increase? Our arrests overall, Part 1 crimes, actually slight decrease, but our Part 2 crimes, a slight increase, and then you can see over there on the right side, reactive, calls that we're being dispatched to are about the same, but officer-initiated, you'll see an increase there. So we've got officers that are out there actively looking for DUIs, actively stopping people at 3:00 in the morning that are dressed all in black, "Hey, what are you doing here? Making that field contact," and that's driving some of our officer-initiated activity, which are leading to investigations, which are leading to arrests. So what's driving our calls and our activity? First and foremost, I would say our officer-initiated activity. We've got the people where we're starting to be able to do that, our community-oriented policing, our field contacts, our traffic stops, checking on suspicious people. Those are resulting in more investigations and more arrests. That was behavior, I believe, that was already out there, so that's a good thing. What are the bad things that are driving our calls for service and our activity? Our addiction-driven behavior, people are stealing things, they're doing things that they wouldn't normally do in order to feed that addiction. Our mental health issues, maybe the lack of residential treatment for people, that would also go along with the addiction-driven behavior, lack of residential treatment options. And then our career criminals. We have career criminals that we talk about every week in intelligence-led policing that are driving our numbers, that are not getting effective sentencing, and they're continuing to repeat crime. I have some people that will do anywhere from 10, 20, I even have an example of a person we did 50 cases on last year, 50. And so we finally, you know, got those consolidated, got that person sentenced. We were hoping for three to four years, they got 18 months, the state pen won't take them, they're doing their time at the county jail. I would estimate they'll probably be out in six to seven months, and they'll be driving crime again. That's what they do for a living. And so that is frustrating for us to deal with these people over and over again. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Pepcorn.
On the, I appreciate all the numbers, and one of them that jumps out at me is gross sexual imposition. If you look, 13, it was 53, then 66, 59, 79, and then it jumped up to 99. Do you have any explanation, or is that, 'cause to me, that's alarming, and is there a change in definition, or why has that increased so much?
No, that is an increase from 2013 of 53 to 2017 of 99. That's the one you're looking at, Commissioner? Yeah, that's an increase of about 20 compared to the year before. That's, gross sexual imposition is sexual assault, rape.
Is there, do you have any explanation, or, I mean?
You know, the majority of those are people that know each other, that, or it's a dating relationship, or a one-time dating relationship, that's what the majority of these are, yes.
Okay, and then I have one more, 'cause to me, that's, obviously, we need to address that, 'cause that's...
We do that through education, we do that through our partnership with Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, so, yes, we do.
Just one more, Mr. Chairman. The thing that I'm really disappointed, well, obviously, I'm disappointed with that, but the thing that surprised me was that DUIs went up 140, 25%, and I was so optimistic that Uber and rideshares and all that stuff was gonna have a positive impact on DUI, Russ, can you talk about that?
You know, I think it has had an impact, Commissioner, that I think they would be higher if we didn't have those businesses working in town, but I would also tell you that we also have more officers out there, so that they're not such a high call load, it's more diversified for them, so it gives them a little more time to look for those DUIs, so that might account for some of that increase also. They're happening out there, it's just now we have more officers to catch them.
No, and I'm not saying that they're not, the other thing that, when they had these reports about alcohol use in North Dakota, obviously, we were high in the, but the number that alarmed me the most was that 50% of accidents have alcohol involved, and to me, that's the, that's a signal that people still are not getting the message, and I don't know if that number correlates in Fargo as well, but that's not good.
Well, it'd be 50% of serious injury or fatality accidents, yes.
So what do you have for, what do you have for a solution for that?
Well, you know, that kind of behavior is a cultural thing. I think that that's, education is what we can continue to do on that. Obviously, you haven't seen any shortage of that from us. We do everything from billboards to advertising over urinals in liquor establishments to warn people of the safety hazards of that, and the fact that it's a violation of law, and they could go to jail.
Just one more thing, and that'll be quiet, I apologize, but I am so appreciative, the visibility in the downtown, to see the officers out and about, I believe, has been a great thing. That's, I believe, has a positive impact, both positive from the public, but also, I think if there's a bad guy around, and they see an officer, I think that has a, anyway, so, and the last thing is, St. Patrick's Day, we're starting to have huge crowds in the downtown.
Yes.
And to have a police presence is very important, especially, there's lots of people walking between bars, so I appreciate that, and I think we have to continue to focus on that. I apologize for talking so much, but I appreciate, and obviously, thank you for your service, and thank you for the men and women that serve our city, 'cause we have an outstanding staff, and we appreciate your job every day.
And to part of your question, Commissioner, NDSU is doing a big program to talk about drinking, and men's drinking, and working with the kids, and actually, I've seen some impacts of that, of making some progress in that, but as the chief would say, there's a lot of behaviors that are long-term ingrained a little bit harder, so probably it'll take some of my society issues to change as time goes on.
I'm just so disappointed, though, 'cause, I mean, my son, they don't drink and drive, he just graduated from college, and they Uber. They, and so I just thought for sure these numbers would be going down, I'm so, I'm disappointed, but...
You're right, Commissioner, there's no excuse, there's no excuse for it.
Mr. Grinberg.
I know some young people that, if they have a good time, they define it as an Uber night to get home. A question and a comment. You know, the level 1 serious crime is held constant or flat, maybe decreased a little bit in the level 2 in your remarks, Chief. Is there any data or trends that you've read or understand with other cities across the nation that suggest that a rise in the level 2 will equate to a rise at some point in level 1, and are there any proactive measures? I know we've all been supportive of your tenure plan.
Right.
And, you know, accommodate the growth of the city, but any comments on, are we gonna see that change because of the data on the level 2 side?
You know, it's hard to predict what will happen here. What I am happy about is that Part 1 stayed 0%. That's our more serious crime. I'm also happy about the officer-initiated level that I've seen. Even though this officer-initiated causes me some higher numbers in another category, the fact that they're out there looking for things, finding things, suggests to me that at some point that might cause that to level off, too, so that's what my hope is.
And just a comment, you know, we all in this room, we read and listen to a lot of information any given day, and the other morning when I heard this on the news, there was a, it makes you pause, and you think about the law enforcement and the officers making those decisions, and for me, anyway, not knowing all the details, there's one thing that comes to mind, and you and your team, is confidence of your skill, of your training, and your professionalism, so I just wanted to share that, that at least in my world, when I hear about these things, it instantly goes to confidence, knowing that we did the right thing in the situation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, yeah, I'm fortunate to be the chief of an organization of a lot of great people, but, you know, ultimately, it comes to the support from the commission and funding us appropriately, so we can train those people and equip them properly, and we're getting that, so I appreciate that.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor, and Chief Todd as well. You know, Commissioner Pepcorn, we can't talk about this too much. You know, it reminds me of the youth behavior risk surveys in our schools. That tells us what's going on, and it's our job to deploy our resources to address these community needs, and heightening our awareness is paramount to that. A question, I lost my crib sheet here, but you dealt with mental health, and you dealt with, there's a category for mental health issues and for addiction issues, and then career criminals, recidivism. Again, I'm gonna go back to public services and public intervention and public treatment, but as I understand it, the more we go down the path of, especially for the people who are on the path of addiction, the more we provide them treatment, intervention, and assistance, and help, and education, the more we're gonna reduce that recidivism rate for that category of people. And we're making some strides with the needle exchange program, we're making some strides with the methadone clinic in town, but this is a priority of the community, and I'm hoping, maybe I'm not right, that that will address, I'm not sure how much of that career criminal recidivism rate is connected to alcohol and addiction, but my gut tells me...
Some of it is, Commissioner, and I will tell you, and the other chiefs and sheriffs will tell you, that people that need drug addiction treatment, we're all for them getting into drug addiction treatment programs, but there is another segment of people that committing crime is what they do for a living. They have no intention of getting a job. I gave the mayor an example of a person that I, we worked this 2017, where he committed, we had 50 cases going on him in one year, and when we finally got him in jail, he said, we did an in-jail interview, and he says, "Well, yeah, I do 200-plus thousand dollars worth of theft a year through pushouts at Walmart and Target, and that's what I do, and that's what I do for a living." It doesn't have a whole lot to do with drugs and alcohol in his case, and we're dealing with a number of people like that, that, you know what, they need to be locked up, because they're continuing to victimize people in our community.
And thank you, and I'll then redirect my focus to addictions and health, mental health issues, and I'd be remiss not to mention Drug Court and the successes for Drug Court, and the need for more Drug Court activities and support as well, which will help you folks as well, and all of us.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief, good report. We'll go to public hearings, and there'd be a lot of continuations, somebody might have been somewhere last week, or...
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I just do all those at once and continue them? And actually, I have to say, it wasn't me, I was back by then, but it was everyone else.
Oh, okay, good.
I can't take the blame, although I will say I was out of tune the week before. So if it's okay to continue, A, B, C, and D, we'll just continue those to the next meeting, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Tony Gehrig, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Roll call, hold, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gehrig. Mahoney.
Aye. So then we'll go to item E, Diamond...
So then we'll go to Item E, Diamond Willow Edition, 622 and 624 10th Avenue North, approval recommended by the Planning Commission on 11/7/17. Zoning change from an MR3 multi-dwelling residential to MR3 multi-dwelling residential with a planned unit development overlay. It's a first reading of the rezoning ordinance, the planned unit development master land plan, master land use plan, and it's a plot of the Diamond Willow Edition. Senior Planner Donald Kress to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners, Donald Kress from the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items. As the mayor has stated, the item in 28E is the Diamond Willow Edition. This is located here on, in North Fargo here, on 10th Avenue North and 7th Street North. There are two lots there, you see the two side-by-side existing houses right on the corner there. This property is zoned MR3, it's a multi-dwelling residential zone. The underlying zoning is not changing, the zone change process is included, because we are adding the planned unit development, or PUD overlay, so we're required to go through that process. The PUD master plan modifies the front, this, this is the layout of the, of the project here. You see three lots facing 7th, three lots facing 10th, and then the layout of the footprint of the residences, these are side-by-side townhouse residences on individual lots, with the driveways there onto 10th and 7th. And the buildings look about like this, this was a graphic provided by the applicant. The master land year, the PUD, modifies the front, rear, and street-side setbacks from the underlying zone of the MR3. The applicant is also using the alternative residential development options for attached housing. This is a provision in our Land Development Code, our LDC, which allows more compact housing development like this. It is not necessary to get a special entitlement for that, it is allowed by right, but we do note it in the planned unit development, because it's part of the subdivision process, so he is using those as well. We've got a couple other projects recently used that, those standards as well. The proposed six units on this project, we'll go back to this graphic here, proposed six units on this project are within the density limit of the MR3 zone. They would be in the MR3, the density is 24 dwelling units per acre. This total area is slightly over a quarter acre, so six units are allowed there. The zone change is included in your packet as an ordinance prepared by the City Attorney's Office. The plat will create six lots in one block, here's the, just the layout of the lots without the houses on them here. These lots are smaller than the minimum area, minimum area for the MR3 zone, but again, that is allowed by the alternative development standards referred to earlier. Access to the lots will be by dedicated public streets. Commissioners, we feel this is an important point here, that these are individual lots, and each one has its own, you know, alley and utility connection to the public street. An earlier version of this did not have that, but after working with staff in the community, the applicant did revise it to this look here. So these are single-family residences, side-by-side, and they are configured to be sold. Perhaps the developer, Mr. Anderson, can have some comment on that as well. The project was heard by the Planning Commission on November 7th, 2017, and they made the recommendation that is in your packet there, that we'd worked with the applicant for some time before that, it was actually, the project was heard at the September 5th Planning Commission, and continued at the October 3rd Planning Commission, following the applicant time, to redesign the project based on recommendations of staff and comments from the public. This is in the Roosevelt neighborhood, and the Roosevelt neighborhood representatives did have some comments, there are two sections of comment in your staff report there, the one that says, Neighborhood Association comments. These are comments that were made following the September 5th meeting, and that motivated the redesign of this project. As you look at that, the, the comments in regular type are the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association's comments, the ones in italics indicate how those were adjusted to fit the, or the, those, the project was modified in response to those comments. And then in the summary of the November 7th Planning Commission meeting, there's a summary of comments by Mr. Jim Leszkowicz, who represented the Roosevelt neighborhood. Mr. Leszkowicz is with us here tonight, and may wish to have some additional comments. The applicant, Nate Anderson, is also with us this evening. Commissioners, the recommendation is stated on your screen, I will note, there is one slight difference between the recommendation on your screen and the one in your packet. The one on your screen adds this line regarding approve the access on a street other than a collector, and this was part of the final recommendation by the Planning Commission. It's simply that in these, in the planned unit development ordinance, it says, PUDs are generally located on collector or higher streets. Now that we use the PUD for some of these smaller projects, it's on a local street, and the Planning Commission did approve that location, so we would request that you would include that in your motion for approval as well. And again, the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote to 7 to 2 on November 7th. That concludes staff's presentation, thank you, Commissioners.
Anyone present who wishes to speak to this rezoning? Anybody present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
The suggested motion?
Correct.
Sir, a second.
I'll second, can I ask one quick question?
Mr. Pepcorn.
So, Don, do you mind me asking, it was 9 to 2?
That should be 7 to 2, Commissioners.
Okay, 7 to 2, can you just give me a summary of the two, what were their concerns, and why weren't, I don't know if you were there, or?
Yes, I was, and I can tell you that a couple of the concerns were, there was, as noted in your summary there, there was actually a movement, a motion by Commissioner Morgan to continue it one more time, that did not go forward due to lack of a second. Some of the Commissioners were concerned about the, the driveway locations here, that there's, that the setback here is short, and the driveway, you know, ideally, you'd like to have 20 feet in front of the garage, here, we don't, these are two-stall garages, so they will accommodate two cars there, but if you're parking here to visit your friend who's living here, they want to be sure that they're not parking over the public sidewalks, or walkability of it, and I believe one of the Commissioners was also concerned about the look of the houses. The house on the left there in that photograph is a rendering of the existing home, and then the three townhomes there go together. The Commissioners, one of the Commissioners was hoping there would be a little more tie-in to the historic look of those buildings. The applicant, and he may wish to have some further comment, explained that once you put the garages in the front, since you didn't have the private driver on the back anymore, the garage, a little bit takes over how the front of the house needs to look. He did add an overhang here to have a little tie-in with this porch here, but those were concerns, and they did also refer to the, a concern about tree preservation of Boulevard. Staff responded to that, that any trees in the Boulevard are the purview of the city foresters, so when it comes time to actually build this with a building permit, that, that will be accounted for, so there can't be just a wholesale moving of the trees. And since this is a planned unit development master plan, there will be a final plan, which your commission won't see, it'll go to the Planning Commission, which is effectively the building permit for this, so when the applicant's at that stage, there is one more review of the project entirely by the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't blame the residents from Roosevelt neighborhood for remaining seated, seated when this comes up, because you're not used to winning. They're not used to being, in their minds, being heard. They're not used to us acting on their urgent changes for their neighborhood, which is so severely at risk, you know, and I'm, from what I'm gathering from this, and, you know, I'm becoming more for higher density and for affordable housing, but we still have these neighborhood issues that are, are so pressing. This is one of their concerns, is they have people buy buildings, and then they just fall into deterioration, and then they become blight, and then our option is what they call clear-cutting of a, of a neighborhood. And the other day, I had family from a little tiny town up in northern North Dakota, that I, we all went to NDSU in the 70s, and I'm driving them through the neighborhood, and their jaws were dropping, like, what has happened to this neighborhood? In the middle of blocks, we have great big, huge apartment complexes next to little houses, and, and, and the folks from, from Roosevelt have a litany of concerns, and we're just not getting their answers, and, and it always prevails. And, and where's it stop? I had a prominent member of a, of a, our Planning Commission recently tell me that, as I paraphrase it, we've maybe lost Roosevelt neighborhood. I don't think that's acceptable, and, and, and this isn't just about this project, this is about the path we're all on, and it's not done. We have a need, a pressing need for a core neighborhood plan, but that's two years away. Meanwhile, we're going to have blocks in some instances, St. John's Block is coming next, the Newman Center, and, and, and pretty soon, the horses are so far out of the gate, there's no retrieving anything. So I'm concerned about this, this neighborhood, and I'm concerned about the implications for other neighborhoods. I'm concerned about projects and buildings where people take ownership and they just deteriorate, so I'll ask this question.
Yes, sir.
How often were we inspecting these properties, or called to inspect them, and what did we find, if anything?
These were inspected for various things by the Building Inspections Department. I do not have that data with me. Our building official, Mr. Tarrelson, is here, although I don't know he would have that off the top of his head, information on inspecting these properties, Bruce?
Hi, Bruce, inspections administrator. I don't have the details on those two homes, but I can tell you, there has not been many calls to that area in general, not those two specific properties.
Okay, another question for Mr. Kress is, how many other projects in that vicinity are similar to this or not?
I don't believe there are any new projects that look like this in that immediate area. There are some duplexes, but that, that townhome look here that we have, which is seemingly so popular now, I don't believe there are any in the immediate vicinity, sir.
And the neighborhood requested, one of their many requests was four units instead of seven, and then down to six. Is that just untenable for the developer, or is that, is that even possible?
I'd rather have the developer answer that one, sir.
Is the developer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson.
And, Mr. Anderson, please know, my, my comments are more general than about your development or your project, it's, it's an overarching discussion that I'm also part of here.
Yep, yes, no problem, and Nate Anderson with Van Anderson Properties, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your comments, and, and there's, you know, there's, it's definitely heard, there's, there's an issue there. As far as the, the density of the four versus the six or seven, is that, that, yeah, the more units that we could get on there, we, the seven was going to work out the best for us, but in extensive meetings with Roosevelt neighborhood, we realized that we, they wanted a smaller density, so we're trying to still try to find that medium ground to where it makes sense for us to do the project, but, you know, at the same time, try to keep their feelings and thoughts in mind as well.
So, Mr. Anderson, your idea is to put families in here with children, is that what these are designed for?
Yes, that's what they're designed for, and that's why we redesigned it to become to where they can be sold individually, and they'll be serviced individually, as Mr. Kress had mentioned, they'll have individual metered units for.
Like a townhome, basically.
Yep, yep, so they can be sold, and, and so that families can move in there.
Commissioner Strand, any other questions?
I don't, thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Garrick?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
So, just maybe for Don.
Yes, sir.
Good discussion, so from your lens, then, would you have the opinion that this was a compromise reached between the neighborhood and, and the developer?
Well, as indicated in the staff report, there, Commissioners, some of the neighborhood's concerns were, were responded to. Again, I don't have a before picture of this, but it was a, there were, you know, there was a concern there about looking into neighbors' yards, restricted green space, the setbacks got a little bit bigger, this, this configuration that we have now allows some additional green space, and I would say this, too, that as those two lots are zoned MR3, without any further entitlement, it would be possible to demolish those houses and build a six-unit apartment building on there, and that's not something that would come through your commission, the Planning Commission, that's just a by-right thing that could be done there. So, I don't know if you favor that perspective, you know, the planning commission, the planning department did recommend a couple different configurations as well, and this is the one that the, the applicant stuck with, as he just indicated here, but we recognize it doesn't respond to all the neighbors' concerns, all the planning commissioners' concerns, but I think compromise would be the, would be the best way to do that. I don't know if Ms. Crusfield would have any more comments on that? Okay, thank you.
So no one entity got all, everything they wanted?
Probably not, sir, or Mr. Leszkowicz may have some additional comments from the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
No.
Garrick.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. So we'll go to F here, a plot of the Fox First Edition, a replat of lots 1 through 3, Block 1, Northern Cheyenne Land, Second Edition, 49 19th Avenue North, and 1870 and 1890 Cheyenne Loop North, approval recommended by the Planning Commission, 7/6/17. Senior Don Gress, Senior Planner Don Gress to explain.
Yes, sir. Again, as you stated, Item 28F is a plot for the Fox First Edition, this property is up here along 19th Avenue North, this is the horse park over here to the west, and Cheyenne Loop North, there are three lots there. The zoning is GI, General Industrial, and that will remain unchanged. The plat proposes, this plat is sideways here, so north is to the right. Plat proposes five lots here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and a cul-de-sac. The applicant, Guy Fox, has his excavation business on Lot 1, there are no TIFs or other incentives associated with this project, and the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen, I believe, Mr., apparently, Mr. Fox is not able to make it here tonight, or his representative, but the Planning Commission has recommended approval, as stated on your screen, and in the staff report, these are the same recommendation in both cases here. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on July 6th, the vote of 8 to 0.
So anybody present who wishes to speak to this recommendation? Anybody present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I don't intend to interrupt, but Mr. Gilmore's advised me there's an existing TIF here on this one.
Jim, you want to address that, please?
Within, a TIF was created for the horse park redevelopment years ago, and this is a subdivision, is part of the development that was occurring as part of that, and so I just wanted to correct the record, that note that this is in, within an existing tax increment financing district.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I add, it was in existence long before any of us were here, and so if, if you wanted to know the details, it's with the horse race park, and it's a little bit of a mess, so.
So, so the applicant did not apply for a new one, Commissioners?
Development up there, moving.
Absolutely.
So the applicant did not apply for a new one, I should have stated that more clearly.
Giddy up.
Can they have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Mayor.
My, my question is, and I kind of say this somewhat rhetorically, but does the developer know the specials he's facing up there?
I believe he does, Mr. Everhart, our specials coordinator, and I talked about that.
Because with the Mid-America Steel going over there, there's just, that whole region, I think, has been profoundly affected with specials.
We do discuss that, if I may have Mr. Everhart make some comment on that, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. The area has been, we have done preliminary estimates for 19th Avenue and for the Cheyenne Loop, there are estimates out there and available for that spread, so the applicant is very much aware of the special assessments out there currently.
Mr. Garrick.
Can I ask what the TIF dollars will be used for?
I, I didn't hear the Commissioner's question.
What the TIF policy is used for, is that what's questioned?
What are, so this property has a TIF on there, what will those tax dollars, what will those TIF dollars be used to fund?
The, the TIF fund was set up to pay for infrastructure that was extended to serve the horse park and this industrial development, and so as TIF revenue comes in, it's used to pay towards those special assessments. I, I don't, again, it's quite a few years ago, I don't have all the details or what the balances are right now.
Will this person will be paying specials and TIF dollars will go to fund the infrastructure?
This person will pay special assessments for those improvements, they will also pay property taxes that will go in to a TIF fund that will be used to repay the city for previously installed infrastructure.
Right, so, I mean, we're kind of taking, we're kind of double-tipping here, we're taking TIF dollars from this district, or this property, to pay for that horse park again, so one more reason why a TIF district shouldn't go in to these areas.
This develop, I think the TIF funds are primarily helping pay for the specials of the horse park, if I recall correctly.
This guy's doing the normal thing, he's going to pay specials, and his taxes go into He's going to pay specials, and his taxes go into the TIF, so he has no control about...
His taxes will be the same whether he was in a TIF or not in a TIF, his specials likewise.
Will be the same. Mr. Garrick, any other comment?
No, I just wanted to make that clear, that this individual will be paying his taxes as usual, like the rest of the city does, and it will go to benefit somebody else directly, which is exactly what a TIF is, and another reason why TIFs are an unfair practice, especially for this individual moving in there, who knows the fault of his own, but will be paying for somebody else's taxes.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Now, we're going to move to item 29, recommendation to authorize staff to submit requests for tax increment financing for a project located at 11th 12th Street North, and the city's financial advisors to review. Make sure, or, excuse me, planner Jim Gilmore to explain, Mark Nesbitt as well.
Is there a previous TIF policy or existing TIF policy and even a proposed one? First, before the staff begins work on a renewal plan or the city attorneys begin work on a development agreement, we check in first with the city commission to see if it's the type of project that you would support. You know, this particular, I should also note that I believe it's eight months ago, we started working on revising the TIF policy. Our tax exempt committee will start to look at some of those changes tomorrow, but while that's not been completed, this particular project is trying to be, they're trying to close on the property by the end of May, so we, we know that policy probably won't be adopted by then, and so, we're kind of operating under our existing policy. The proposed project is the redevelopment of this manufactured gas plant. There's two parts to this cleanup. First is the, sort of that environmental cleanup that XL is responsible for, and they're not asking for any TIF resources for that environmental cleanup. They're asking for resources to clear up all of the foundations that aren't hazardous, but would help make the site easier to develop in the future. The site now is the site of an apartment building, approximately somewhere between 87 and 89 units, 49 years old, value about 2.7 million. You can see from some of these pictures and what was in your attachment, that it's, and I'd certainly call it blighted condition, and either needs a major remodel or what was identified in our Renaissance Zone Plan that suggests that the site be cleared for future development. So, what, you know, this is a little different. We don't know what the development's going to be. XL will address that. The property will be cleaned up and then sold to another developer, and so, it'll be up to the city and that developer what goes there in the future. So, really, the decision tonight is whether or not you want to authorize the city's staff and the city attorney to work on a renewal plan and bring it back to you for your consideration. Mark Nesbitt is here with XL Energy, and I'll let him explain a little bit more about their project and their request.
Well, thank you, Jim, and I want to let the commission know Jim has been a real pleasure to work with, so we appreciate that. Mayor Mahoney, commissioners and staff, I am Mark Nesbitt, North Dakota Principal Manager, and on behalf of XL Energy, we're asking you to consider our request for tax increment financing, or the TIF as it's commonly called, for a project to clear and prepare the Heartland Apartments property for redevelopment. A proposed project, as Jim mentioned, a larger project, but in this specific application, we're talking about $2 million in TIF eligible funds, which would include demolishing the buildings, removing below-ground structures, and making other improvements to utilities in the area, including undergrounding electric lines. Because the property is in a prime location for redevelopment, as Jim mentioned, it's part of that long-term plan, this would also forward the city's Renaissance development plan, which identifies the city's goal for this block as clearance and redevelopment. So, at this point, we respectfully ask the commission to authorize staff to move forward with consideration of our TIF application. I am happy to provide further information if you would like, and I also have Kristen Carney, our in-house counsel, here with us tonight, and our outside counsel and our TIF consultant, Peter Berry. So, we stand ready to answer questions, but at this point, the focus tonight is about the TIF eligible dollars.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
Mr. Chairman, so, Mark, would you describe this as the TIF funds will enable you, I mean, if you didn't get those, you would still do the, basically, the reclamation of the underground, but basically, what the TIF is going to allow you to do is to basically redo the whole lot, so then it will be more accessible for redevelopment. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner Pepcorn, that's a fair assessment. What we would do, we have two plans that have both been approved by the North Dakota Department of Health, one at the level of just cleaning up and digging and removing what we can gain access to, but the next step of going over and above is to demolish that building, clean the whole property up, make it very suitable for redevelopment.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. I have several questions. Explain the ownership to me, if you would, and what the transition of ownership will be anticipated to be after, because there, I'll let you explain it, so.
Yep, it is owned by the Heartland property. It's three, three main members involved with it, and we've been in discussions for quite a while with them, and that's maybe one of the good reasons that I have Kristen Carney along, if you would like to talk. And it's a little bit delicate, because we're in negotiations right at the moment with that final purchase contract not being signed until some of these things fall into place for us.
Hi, good afternoon, this is Kristen Carney, and to answer your question a little further, we are set to close on the property transaction at the end of May. We've entered into a confidential purchase and sale agreement at this stage, and our expected closing date, if we get to closing, is at the end of May or into June.
If I might, does that property owner have an option after this?
So, I guess the only, I guess the concern I have is in terms of getting into the confidential terms and conditions.
Sure. I'll come at this another way. What's the public gain, so I know, what's the public good that will come out of this TIF district to help improve this district further? Right now, it's affordable housing, and it will be owned by a private developer, and it'll increase the value to them, but the public will have invested to do that.
And what I would say is the value is, in taking this blighted property, also will give us an opportunity to clean up the remnants from this manufactured gas plant. At the time it was taken down, we did it in the normally accepted practices. As we move forward, we look to make sure that this property would support extensive development, could be higher density, it could be, well, part of the city's effort in the core city, the Renaissance Zones, and that's what I envision coming if we have the opportunity to gain access to this property, clean up any of the remnants from that manufactured gas plant, the underground facilities that are somewhat problematic.
Mark, I think what John's suggestion is that perhaps if XL own the property, once you get closed, you'll redevelop this whole area, but what if the city said, hey, if we do a TIF for you, we'd like you to do an RFP on affordable housing? I mean, if the city plays ball on the TIF, is there a way in which the corporation could say, hey, here's what we're looking to put in that site, whether Commissioner Grinberg in planning or somebody comes up with stuff? In Lincoln, we sometimes saw, is people say, you know, what would go really nice here is affordable housing, or what would go really nice here is, is housing for our workforce or whatever, and do an RFP, and then not necessarily the same owner buys it back, but somebody who buys it back does an RFP that the city was okay with, and then we build back into that area apartments that are affordable. So, is there something like that could be crafted that will give you a TIF if we're allowed to do an RFP afterwards?
Yeah, so, I think we can evaluate those types of options with staff and explore ways, what our options may be. I think, again, we will have to adhere to some of the terms and conditions that are in the current purchase and sale agreement and what will be associated with that closing at the end of May. But I think if this application gets directed to staff for further consideration, we can explore with staff what options are on the table and how to navigate those.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, mayor, for explaining that better than I could. I'm just wondering and assuming, and you shouldn't assume, but I'm assuming that this issue here will affect the valuations that you're talking and negotiating over at the table with the current owner. And so, that makes me wonder, well, if your closing was at the end of May, if your closing is the end of the May, maybe we should let you settle all that, then we revisit this after we aren't interjecting ourselves.
John, the TIF recommendation is that it be evaluated for TIF. We're not giving them TIF tonight. So, all they're going to do is go in for devaluation for TIF. We can do that same timeframe as they get their closing done.
Yes, correct, and I guess I would just mention that, you know, as we're approaching closing, our, we are seeking the TIF assistance prior to closing, but again, our plan would be to go talk with staff for the next, you know, few weeks and months, and then come back with a proposal and to try to make a decision before we get to closing on the transaction.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
Yep, just to address, John, so the, it'll still go through tax exempt review committee, and so, this is just the initial, it'll still have to be approved, and I support what you're talking about, but the other thing is, John, just because it's low rent now, there shouldn't be people living in there. I mean, that's...
The safety.
If you've been in those apartments, I was in there a long time ago, they're not, they're not very good standards as far as quality of living, and so, I just think it's an opportunity. I support what you're saying, and we can, we can visit that when we go through, when we come, when it comes through tax exempt and comes through again.
So, if I might, mayor.
Commissioner Strand.
My, my support today would be contingent on our best efforts to work toward the greater public good with this investment from the public, and if that includes affordable housing or other public access, I'd want us to champion that. And then, of course, we'll all decide later if there, if those components are there or not.
Mr. Garrick, any comment?
Yes, I have some comments. One, why is this not currently supported by our TIF policy?
I think this is consistent with our current TIF policy. However, I believe about a year ago, you had wanted to delay action on any TIFs until we got the new policy done, and so, I just want to acknowledge that while that's not done, this is consistent with the existing policy. Also, the existing policy primarily dealt with areas outside of the downtown. We don't really have a firm policy within the downtown, so we've been more flexible in the downtown. I probably just want to respond to Commissioner Strand's question, you know, what's the public benefit for this? First of all, I don't think there's any public risk, because the way the TIF would be structured is, is that XL would actually go spend the $2 million to do this cleanup. The city would not provide any money upfront for that. They would only recover their money if there is a development down the road and if it does pay property taxes. So, the entire risk on whether they get repaid or not is really with, you know, XL and whatever future developer might acquire this property.
Mayor?
With due respect, Jim, there is clear risk by the public, because if they do move forward with development, a TIF means that they don't pay taxes to school board, park board, airport, county, or the city. They have to pay back a loan of $2 million that goes directly against our general fund, basically, and general fund of all of the entities. So, to that, I disagree. My point here is that this is going to happen anyway. This is prime real estate right in downtown. The butt fork question for me clearly isn't fair, and, you know, we've had developers buy entire blocks of downtown, or, excuse me, of NDSU real estate and built up on those things. They had to clear massive amounts of debris, homes, in order to build those things. This would be a massive building, they'll have to be cleared or a bill on top of it. This is nothing new, this is development, this is what development is. So, to me, no, this is not for the better good of Fargo residents, this is for the better good of a business, which is fine, that they should pay for that, and it's not for the city of Fargo or the residents of Fargo to pay $2 million for somewhere else's money in their bank account.
I mean, I think this property would likely develop anyway. The question is, will this develop as a $2 million C store and fast food restaurant, or will this have, on a site that has a potential for $20 million in development? And I think that's why I think...
That is not up to the city to decide, that is not up to the government to decide what gets developed there. That is, that is not what our role is. You are outside the bounds of what our role is for the city government.
If I may, maybe just to address that comment, a couple of things just to note. One, and I know you can't on the phone probably see the figures we brought here today, but maybe this helps as a visual aid to show folks. So, a couple of things that we're planning to do with the TIF eligible cost. One, the historic infrastructure that's underneath the ground, really, you can help see how it probably dictated what the construction was of the apartments that are on the property today. In the yellow are the historic infrastructure subsurface features that remain today, at least many of them. And then, on the gray is the current buildings at the site. A couple of things that we're planning to do, one is to remove that infrastructure at least four to five feet down across the property, but also in certain targeted areas as deep as 12 feet, to help ready the site for other, more redevelopment options going forward. Also, the buildings themselves have challenges with them, not only in their deferred maintenance condition, so that they are really not cost-effective at this point to remodel or try to reinvigorate, but they also have asbestos and lead issues in the building. So, the demolition process is actually going to be significantly a hindrance to anyone who wants to redevelop the site. So, really, what we're trying to come in and do is remove all of the structures on the build, on the property, which are about five buildings, remove all of that subsurface feature, and do all of the abatement work ahead of time. Now, again, we do not have to do that to do the cleanup of the property. The state has approved just doing certain limited excavations around the building and installing a vapor mitigation system in the building. So, what we're asking for, for TIF eligibility here, is to really help get the site ready for redevelopment and allow for more options going forward for a redeveloper.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand.
You know, I'm really on unstable ground here as to which way I feel about this, and bottom line, I'm getting the sense, and with Mr. Gilmore's comments, that you're going to be doing the project anyway, it's to what degree you do it, and I'm guessing if XL wanted it to have the highest value afterwards, you would take it to the furthest level you could to do that, and I'm almost leaning toward that's, that's on your shoulders.
Again, we do not, I guess from our perspective, we do not need to do the more, you know, to do the demolition or undergrounding of electric lines in the area or other things that are really helping more for the purpose of trying to get the site ready for redevelopment. I don't know, Mark, if you want to comment, too, but the remediation costs of this project are much more significant. And that part, yes, we are intending to move forward with, one way or another, but the demolition portion of this project, not necessarily, and we, you know, we are also evaluating how that affects our gas customers going forward.
I think the difficulty Commissioner Strand's having is frequently a developer comes in, you're asking for a TIF because of blight, and when they do the blight and clean that all up, there's some reason for public good, you help out so you get a better product. But all this is, tonight is a recommendation to go to the tax exempt and have it evaluated and see if it makes sense, and it'll come back, I'm sure, with a better picture, so. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, then?
I don't have a motion.
Oh, I don't have a motion. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
So, it's the Senate to evaluation for a TIF, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
No.
Garrick. Garrick. Mahoney.
Aye. Tony, are you there?
Vote yes or no on that last motion, please?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item 30, request to continue tap ride service for NDSU in place of Route 35 in the fall semester. Julie Bummelman to explain, or is it Matt? I'm sorry, Matt Peterson to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. In December, we had brought forward a pilot project up on NDSU campus to bring in a different type of a service that's an alternate to our fixed route service up there. type of a service that's an alternate to our fixed route service up there later at night, and that service was called Tap Ride. So previously, we had Route 35, which was just a standard fixed route like anything. It ran for about, just over two hours up on the NDSU campus, shown on the map up here, with 20-minute frequency, serviced main NDSU facilities, tried to get students back and forth from library, Albrecht, Memorial Union, back to some dormitories and things like that. So what we ended up doing was bringing in a Tap Ride service on a six-month pilot for the second half of the NDSU academic year, which increased the service area. As you can see, Route 35 is kind of nestled within that green area, and so that's all of the area that we're servicing with the Tap Ride service. We told you in December that we would come back with a report about this time. We wanted to get, you know, enough time by that we could provide some good information for you. Tap Ride is currently, we're considering Tap Ride to be a success mainly because it's topping out around 20 rides per hour, and for any kind of a brand-new service, that's pretty good. Generally speaking, we, you know, see three to seven rides an hour for the first year or two until a route gets established. Granted, this is up on NDSU campus, lots of high density, and we were able to increase that service area to more student housing, which is why I think we're seeing that success. What I have up on the screen here for you is, it's a heat map of our pickup and drop-offs. The previous Route 35, and I apologize, I just thought about this now, as you can see, the previous Route 35, we have University Village up here, and then we come down Albrecht, and we kind of do this turnaround here on 18th Street. With the Tap Ride service having that extended area, we're seeing a lot of ridership down here, south of 12th Avenue, in those Dakota Apartments along Dakota Drive there. The NDSU Transit Hub, which actually links passengers or students to the main Matbus system, and then, of course, up here, University Village is still pretty high end along Albrecht with the student housing. And so we have it broken down by individual hours. We did extend the service to 11:15 PM, and as you can see, all of those areas are fairly popular throughout the duration of the route. And so really, what we're looking at here is just a motion to move forward with NDSU in negotiations for the fall semester. We generally meet with them every spring after the academic year has finished, go over our recommendations for any route changes or alterations for the upcoming year, and so that's what we're really doing here tonight. And if you have any questions about the service, I know it's new and kind of different than what we've done previously.
Good. Discussion? Mr. Pepcorn?
I'll move to approve. I'll have to add one quick comment, John, since you're also a former student. You could say that you were going to the library, but also right across the street is the Herd and Horn, so you tell your parents you're going to the library. Isn't that right?
I'll second that.
This is true.
And take Uber home.
Any other discussion?
Mayor.
Mr. Gary.
Matt, this is an on-demand ride service, kind of like Uber or Lyft.
That's correct, it is. Students are able to access it right on their phone. The nice thing about this system is, when we implemented it, and it's all in the cloud, the students access it right from their phone. The computer does all of the routing for the driver. We don't even have a dispatcher. They just watch the system, really, is what they do.
So why can't these students use Uber or Lyft?
Well, they could, however, this is part of our agreement with NDSU. NDSU pays Matbus or donates to Matbus for our operational costs, and so that we have that service dedicated to that area to bring these students home.
My point being is that the city government is directly interfering with the market, whereas NDSU could partner with Lyft or Uber to do the exact same thing. So for me, we are all for stepping out of bounds once again. They could do this thing exactly with Uber and Lyft. So for me, good, I'm glad to have it arrived, but we need to do it the right way and empower the private sector to do what the government shouldn't be doing.
Any other discussion? Sounds like a great ride. The pilot's done very well. I'm glad you guys are doing this.
Oh, and, sorry, I did forget one other thing. You guys had asked for costs back in December, which we did not have, and that is this next slide. So Route 35, being a fixed route vehicle, the cost to operate that is about $6.30, just over $6 per mile. Since we're using a smaller vehicle on Tap Ride, the cost is about half, and so as you can see, the 45 days that we've had it in operation, we've saved about $2,000 in operating costs, which is also very beneficial to our system, which is why we want to look at this system for implementing in other lower-density areas of the city in the future.
Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 31, you have my recommendations and appointments for the following boards and commission, Airport Authority and Library Board. Is there a motion?
I'll so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Actually, Eric Lind is here today. Eric, would you just stand up, please? He's actually with Tony and the Happy Hooligans as well, and serves for the guard as well as a Delta pilot, is it? Okay, sorry. Very good. Lynn and Lind now, so we're getting there. Item 32, set, Board of Equalization is to meet Tuesday, April 10, 2018, at 7:30. Ben, does Ben have to comment to that, or do we just do that, Kent? Do we just have to make that what time?
Eighteen days.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Does that mean for all the commissioners? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Commissioner Gary, this is your one. It's item seven, a loan from the utility fund in the amount of $450,000 to the parking ramp and repair replacement fund to make the necessary repairs on the Civic Center ramp. Jim Gilmore to explain.
There's, we identified about $450,000, $400,000 to $450,000 in repairs that are needed to the Civic Center ramp attached to the Radisson, proposing we do a, since it's relatively, you know, small amount rather than issuing bonds, we do a loan from one of the city funds. Kent Cos and then the Finance Committee recommended the utility fund, and so this would be spent this year and then paid back over a three-year period, actually, between 2019 and 2021.
Commissioner Gary?
Mr. Mayor, we asked the residents of Fargo to raise utility rates in 2018 because apparently we didn't have enough money in that fund to do what we need to do, utilities, and now we are asking for a loan from that very same utility to fund something different, parking ramps. To me, this explains two things. One, we didn't need to raise that utility rate, and two, we shouldn't be funding parking ramps. The Island Park ramp is able to fund their repairs based on a TIF, okay? So we're taking money from taxpayers around that area to pay for that, so that's great. And now we're asking for a loan to fund and repair another parking ramp that we have city-owned. So again, we're raising taxes in areas we shouldn't be to fund areas that we shouldn't be paying money for anyway, which is parking ramps, and it is our intention as a city to build many more parking ramps around the city of Fargo, which we can't afford, and so I just wanted to point that out, make that clear, and not have it on the consent agenda where we all simply agree. So I'll be voting no, and that was the reason I brought it up.
Well, let's clarify some facts on that, and I'll have Kent explain that. There are two disconnects here. The utility rates are not connected to this loan. Kent, you want to explain why we're doing this and why it saves the city of Fargo money?
Yes, Commissioners, with regard to the loan, you know, these funds do have a fund balance that's maintained for the long-term sustainability of the programs, and as a result, there is cash that's there, and the Finance Department does manage the investment portfolio for the city, and right now, our short-term rates might be anywhere from 1 to 1.2 on a longer-term basis, closer to 1.5. And so we're looking at this from an investment opportunity and as a simplification of just an issue that needs to be dealt with. It is really not a net loss to the utility because we are paying interest, and we're paying an interest rate that's commensurate with the portfolio returns that we're currently getting, and it's a very short amortization of just three years. If you did a flashback into our history, we've done interfund loans to a very significant magnitude. There's a facility up by NDSU called the Baseball Stadium. Twenty-two some odd years ago, they used a series of interfund loans for that project that was about $5.1 million. So it's not an unprecedented move, and from a transactional basis, it's a lot easier to do interfund loans within reasonable amounts, simply to defray the financing costs that would otherwise be affiliated with a loan from a bank or some external resource.
Can you address the utility rate increase, the way that's separated from this?
Well, yeah, I think the, this is basically kind of a cash management issue on the utility side. I don't see it directly related to rates. If you were to say, well, we're going to give you a 0% loan and just wipe that clean and just pay the money back, you know, that could have some marginal effect upon the rate structure and the revenue going into that. This is designed to be an interest-bearing repayment schedule, and so really, we're maintaining our financial position.
But when you recommended the rate increase on utilities this year, that was to manage the utility payments we have to pay. It's a different basket of rate increase for a payment of--
Yeah, yes, I believe that the utility's sustainability is to keep the fund in a good position and be able to maintain that position over a long period of time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so Jim, could you just talk a little bit about, so, right now, we're, in the next four years, a lot of our loans are all going to be paid off, basically, with all the parking ramps, and so it's just going to take a while for us to catch up. Isn't that kind of a good summary? And then also, I mean, we could defer all these and wait till then to get, to do the repairs on the ramp, but it's way better to get these repairs done now so we don't get further deterioration. That's part of the reason. So just talk a little bit about that.
That's an important point. We really want to keep these buildings in good shape, and so we don't get even more cracking, even more deferred maintenance. The longer you wait, the more expensive it gets, so these older facilities should be looked at every three to five years, and so that's what we've been doing. The parking funds, I think, over the last, you know, five to 10 years, we had built up to about a $2 million reserve, and then used that in part to finance the Roberts Commons facility, but Dave is correct, over the next four years, we're going to pay off four lots, or three lots that we bought from the railroad about 15 years ago. Interestingly enough, initially, we had issued bonds to pay for that, and Kent, a few years ago, converted that to an interfund loan in order to lower our interest rate and increase the general fund's return. So this is kind of the second one that we have. There's also a lot that was paid for with special assessment financing. That'll be paid off over the next three years. So over the next four years, we'll be seeing our annual debt payments drop by about $250,000 a year, and so then we'll have, we'll start to build up that repair and replacement fund yet again.
So to summarize it, we could defer the maintenance, but it would be much more expensive if we did that, and so this is a short-term loan. We get much better interest rates by borrowing to ourselves. That's the, that's basically what we're proposing here. So it's common sense, and it's a win-win. Thank you.
Mr. Strand. Thank you, Mayor. I'm not quibbling at all with the financing and the financing approaches to this. I will remind the Commission that at least once before, and with some of our staff on another occasion, but I've been approached twice by a contractor in town, and his family name is, I think, affiliated with the construction of the Island Park ramp, and he's been saying all along, or to me, that when we allow people to do snow removal with these liquid de-icing materials, that that will deteriorate the concrete surfaces, that will create cracks and will lead to higher maintenance requirements down the road. And his view, and again, I'm not an expert on this, but his view is, well, why don't we just remove the snow without putting these chemicals on it that will contribute to our future needs for maintenance? Maybe that's completely off-base, but I hope our maintenancees aren't connected to those practices that we're still doing, to my knowledge.
Yeah, John, we don't use, that's urea fertilizer and all that is very hard on cement, and we, I think we just use sand, and we do not use--
I don't think so.
Really, well--
Jim, could we just have the parking guy come next--
We'll have him come because you're right, primarily we use sand, and the other thing is that it's very important to wash these things down in the spring because certainly we use those kind of chemicals on our streets, and so as you drive into that, you're going to track that in, and so that's one of the important things of maintenance is that that gets washed down in the spring and cleared off.
After a whole season of applying it.
Again, you know, what we apply to our streets is what gets tracked in, that's the same type of thing. So even if we don't use it in the ramp, some of that's going to track in anyway, and, you know, cleaning that off, having a membrane on there to kind of protect that concrete is very important. But we can have, you know, a report at one of your future meetings on how we do that maintenance.
And I've just duly carried forward a citizen concern. Okay. Commissioner Gary, final comment?
Yeah, you know, to Dave's point, you know, we could defer these costs, or we could just not have the city build parking ramps. That seems like a common sense solution to me because ultimately, utilities are funding the general fund. We have told people of Fargo we need to raise utility rates in order to fund utilities. That simply is not true. We fund the general fund by 20% based on what is coming out of utilities, and that just, that isn't, we can't tell people on one hand that we need more money for utilities and then take money from utilities to pay for these other things. So we're paying money from our left hand to pay the right hand, and we're telling people we need to raise taxes in order to do that, when we're actually just raising your taxes just to have money in the general fund. So, no, this isn't a smart deal, it's not a common sense deal. The common sense deal is to not build these structures, it'll let the free market work. If there's more demand for parking, it will come, and it'll make money doing it.
Mr. Chairman--
Commissioner Pepcorn.
So, one of the things is, to get big employers to come to downtown, they, you have to have parking, or they're not going to come, period. And so that's one argument. I mean, it's, I could go on and on, but seriously, if you wanted to just have dirt roads and ponies, then we wouldn't have to have parking ramps. But if you want to have businesses, if you want to have commerce, then we have to do economic development. And if you don't want us to do economic development, that's fine, but there's a lot of towns in North Dakota that would like to be in our situation.
Well, we have a business that wants to come down these 90 parking spots, and that's, I mean, they can't find them, so.
But if we don't, if they don't have parking spots, they're not going to move downtown, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's the--
Walmart builds their own parking ramps, their own parking spots, okay? Any economic development, that's a Trojan horse, okay? Any business that happens in Fargo, they build their own parking spot, except for downtown, which is special for some reason. No, they can build their own parking spots if they want to be there, that's a Trojan horse.
Am I a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?[1777.82]